December two thousand twenty-two, council meeting. If you all want to stand in front of your chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. And gentlemen, we started our year off with prayer. It's back to finish our year in prayer as well. Mr. Harry Rozell, minister at Fifth Presbyterian Church.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can we open up this meeting with prayer? Let's pray. For God of truth, truth and grace, as these elected officials gather, not as themselves, but as representatives of the citizens who are like them, we take a moment and invite you to preside over the business of God. At this time of the season, we may celebrate you in different ways, with different traditions and beliefs. But we share a common belief as to your message of peace on earth, good will to all. So as we pray, we invite you into the hearts and minds of not just this governing body, but all citizens of this nation, this state, and this county for that purpose. Be with specifically today each member, as they consider this for the business at hand, direct their thoughts, discussions, and actions as to the right direction they are to make as they transact the business of this one thing. In the process, grant them your wisdom and guidance to serve the common good of the people they represent. This we pray, and I believe in you. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Okay, again, from you, you will find the rather light phase. The second agenda is the thing that someone was just.
Oh.
I would like to say the amount is what? Ten twenty-three. Seventy-five.
One thousand twenty-three dollars?
On the other dollar?
One zero three seven. I missed that one.
At the bottom of what?
Bottom, I had a blank.
Sorry.
Thank you, guys.
Scott, I'd like to pull the highway department.
The road highway?
Yes.
Josh, did you have any?
Yeah, I would like football, court, and health, please.
Court, and health?
And there's also the first Carroll Manor transfer.
Is that perpetuation fund also on the clerk?
No, not quite perpetuated. Actually, no, I didn't. A lot of this is about the same thing. We have a lot of transfers here for computer hardware that is our intent, but all that in art.
I'd like to review this. Both of the times there were showing four.
And, um, both of those, Doc?
Oh, it's the first one.
Just the first one?
First one for what?
Joint Court.
They're both?
They're both.
They're both?
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong.
Both of them? Both of them, okay. Are there any others?
Superior Court was my only one.
All the Superior Courts. All Superior. Okay, so far we have the three highway, the two joint court. Did you, Josh, on the perpetuation, did you want to discuss that one? Or is that?
I mean, we can transfer. I mean, it's a perpetuation fund, not a county general.
Okay.
I mean, but I think everybody should be aware of our kind of approach to this.
Motion to approve the consent.
And then the very first Carroll Manor?
Yes.
And the five Superior Court. Okay?
I'd like to say something.
Yes.
Departments that did the one hundred dollar, under two hundred dollars, they're not on here, and there's some department heads out there that didn't realize that I could do those. So those are not on agenda. I did have a mini folder for you to look at if you wanted to see them. So that's why they're not on the agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda except for the exceptions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, and signed. Motion carries seven, zero, and four. The record, all council members are present. Okay, we will start. I think, can it be here? Oh, there it is. Oh, gosh, I missed it. Okay, now if you want to address the three transfers to the hybrid.
First one, uniform and testing.
Are you getting him on the mic?
No, fine. We got him. First one is uniform and testing. This covers invoices, ITI invoices for pre-employment drug testing. That's for thirty-three hundred dollars. Transfer from Morgan Chills to uniform and testing. The second one, fueled to office manager. This covered the minimum year for her salary. Some of the time she took it in mid-year. And then the third one, we actually don't need the seven thousand dollar transfer. That's covered on the conference. Those are our requests.
Okay, so the Albert Highway transfer to other equipment? We don't need that. That is under, that falls under the conferences. For the record, you need to wait for seven thousand dollars.
Motion to approve about two.
Second.
I've got a question on the overtime there. Do you, you said earlier in the year, do you know what month that was worked in?
Oh, I know, I know this before March, I believe.
Do we normally let that run for multiple months and then just catch it up at the end? Like procedurally, so in other words, she's been paid, but now the line's going to run a deficit because she was paid overtime. Is there any consequence for running it to the end of the year and doing this as opposed to understanding the amount that was paid in overtime and doing the transfer more timely to the overtime being worked?
Not with us.
Okay.
We went back and we did see that she did the overtime in the beginning of the year. And departments, there's about three or four of them that we have explained that they can't go over their line item. And if they don't have an overtime line, that means a big person needs to take less.
That was my question, how does this come to overtime and not fight? Isn't that personnel policy issue?
And that's, and that's my question too, like, you know, trying to discuss this months and months after the fact from a, from a process and procedure standpoint. Whereas if we, if we could have discussed it and instructed literally at the time of, or soon after, I think would be helpful.
I think, I think we did catch it and talked with them because she hasn't taken overtime. She takes what's nine a hour. Yeah, so I think it was discussed and it was after the fact.
Okay, you've got a motion and a second currently on the floor. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero. And that takes us down to the joint court. Per diem penitent jurors to the public defender for four thousand and transfers of the indigence to public defender for four thousand. So eight thousand to the public defender. There's no one from the course here, I don't believe.
Motion to approve.
My question, my question is just, do we have an increase in local, public defenders for foreign?
They said during budget session, they were going to be real tight this year, and they anticipated being very close, and this is a reflection of that.
Okay, that was my own question. Thank you. And just Paul, can you make the motion?
Sure.
Do you have any seconds?
Sure, I will.
Okay. All right, motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero. And down to the clerk.
All the transfers going into office furniture. My chair I sit in has two broken wheels, and one of the other office staff chair won't stay up. So the cylinders are shot. And I also need some more storage for, the, we, right now, we're utilizing clerk storage and election storage because we are at, we were asked to retain the 2020 election, uh, election materials. I am out of space, so I need to take what's in election storage that's clerk stuff. I need to get that out and put it in a different location so that I've got room for the 2023 municipal election. I do not have room to, by law, secure it.
So you're talking about file cabinets?
Um, I don't, it can't be boxes. They have to be behind a double lock. So they can be like in a file cabinet, but locked behind the lock.
They'll have numerous lock facilities in the stores in the basement.
We have, well, that other people have access to.
No, I mean, there's, or there's still.
I, I have a cage area that's locked, but the equipment ha, or the material has to be in a lock, behind the lock.
Right, that's what I'm saying. There's a, I mean, there has been a number of filing cabinets in the, in the store. Is that not the case anymore?
I did not see any that have locks with keys already down there.
I wonder if they have the, the storage areas.
They were supposed to come yesterday and.
Would that be the locked filing cabinet, that's behind a lock, and then behind a lock?
Yes.
That'd be three?
Yes, well, it would be two. If, well, the double lock has to be, you have to have, during the election process, you have to have a Democrat has a key and the Republican has a key. It's a bipartisan locks behind another lock that I would have access. Yeah, it's, but we're just running out of storage because we're keep, the 2020 election was so large, but we've been asked to keep, retain it because there's some legal.
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty. We could have gotten rid of it in September, twenty, uh, September this year. But we have been asked by secretary, Attorney General and the Secretary of State and the Clerk's Association to retain that because there's been a legal actions.
So what is the hundred seventy dollars for? File, a lot of filing?
It, it's all going in together. So I mean, I, that whole amount, I don't know what I'm going to need until I start. I just know I need some sort of a filing system, shelving units.
If you don't know what you need, how many new amounts and what it's going to cost?
I know I need filing cabinets. I don't have quotes. I'm just going to buy what we've purchased in the past. So I need fi, I need at least two filing cabinets, possibly three. I won't know until I start putting these stuff in how many more I need. I, I don't know. That's nothing I'm going to be able to tell. You wouldn't be able to tell me that either, how many shelves you need to hold business supplies. I don't know until I start putting it in there. I don't know how large elections are going to be. I mean, 2020 is, was huge. 2022 wasn't as, as big.
I'm just saying, I don't know how you're grabbing your number out of the air. At least you don't know what to do. I'm just saying.
I need at least two, I need at least two filing cabinets, possibly three, and I need at least two chairs for my office.
No, that's missing quotes for that.
No. I, I've got, I've purchased a chair before. It was two ninety-nine, and I've purchased filing cabinets before.
You're supposed to bring estimates and quotes to us when asking for money.
I'm not asking for money. It's a transfer.
Motion to approve the consent.
Second. And I just have one question. Well, I'll, you've got a motion on the floor with a second. All right, stopper. Are these just the amounts that are left in like the imaging and the setting services?
Yes, I just, I thought, yes, because you guys had said I needed the transfer versus asking for additional. So I thought I would zero out those lines that I'm not used, I'm not going to be using anymore in order to get the funds to purchase what I need.
So my, my problem? Excuse me. Just for the record, I'm wearing glasses for a surgery on Monday, and it really hurts my nose. So I apologize for the distraction. But the problem I have is especially chairs, which is, office furniture is this ongoing thing that we debate over and over and over again, setting precedent that you don't come in and budget chair money and that you just wait till the end of the year and transfer into that line and buy whatever you want. It's really not, it's not a clerk problem. It's a procedural problem.
I am buying chairs that are on sale, and the sale goes off at the end of the year. So like I said, I've already purchased one. And kind of locked that in it for three weeks to make sure we all kind of like it before I've purchased anymore.
And you purchased that out of your budgeted funds?
Yes. And it will be the exact same chair.
God, I'm confused. You're not going to buy a.
No, they're, they're two hundred.
When you buy a copper cabinet.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm going to buy just the.
Year, I'm buying what you need.
I'm going to buy what I, I'm trying to be frugal, and I'm trying to find the best deal I can find. I mean, I get, I go through three different, I go through Quill, stationaires, and online. So I try to find the best, the best bargain or the best deal I can get for the size of the usage that I'm going to be using it for.
I don't think you're saying we can do that point. I think we're back to Josh said, is that anybody that has money left over at the end can just throw it over and then buy what they think they need.
Well, we haven't had chairs in the office for six and a half years. I mean, we're running on.
I mean, if somebody, you know, if, if got something that she's left dealt without, and she wanted it for the rest of the year, or not just anybody, and that's when you do your transfers. I mean, I think that's a normal thing. The counties are.
Well, not if we're telling people, no, you can't add office furniture. We've told other departments, they asked for it in the budget, we said no.
Right, and I understand that. And yes, what another reason, I know those that were under two hundred dollars, I did not go ahead and transfer because it was all going through the same old line, and I didn't figure anybody's wanting to just go on and act with units. So that's why that's.
So Josh, let me understand. So, you know, she explained rollers are broken on the chairs and are setting that. What, I mean, what do you do in that case then? If you, you know, if you've got chairs that don't work, you've got to have people have chairs that work.
Yeah, I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm saying why wasn't it done during regular legislative? Like, this wasn't a mystery, that chairs just became, like, like, when, when did you become aware that you needed file cabinets?
When did I become aware that I needed more file cabinets?
Yeah. When, when did this order come from the state that made you retain these documents?
Shortly before September of this year. But until I had the 2022 election, I didn't know how much space I still had left. But now that we've done the election, I am completely out of space. I have zero space to put any of the 2023 municipal election. And unless I get rid of the 2020, which just came back from conference, today's my first day back, and they are asking that we retain it for at least a few more months. So I don't know how long a few more months is.
I might play the check with the keys tomorrow because probation got rid of a lot of.
Oh, okay.
Um, and their filings, and they were going to get rid of the filing cabinet. So you know, I got helpful reserve. Because he asked me that. He probably didn't know he needed some. I don't know how many there are.
I mean, I, I, we recycle a lot, what's down in the basement. We recycle.
Well, or if they lock. I mean, I don't know whether they lock or not.
And we can buy keys.
That might be a good idea.
And I just have one quick question. The second, Debbie, and the first, Claire. Those are just leftover amounts?
Um, they, they were off substantial amounts during the, this year.
Okay.
Um, and I know they're not going to be using that amount, and it's probably at least double that amount that they're not going to use. But I just want to take it all just in case. But again, you know, if I, if I'm going to be purchasing three chairs at three hundred dollars apiece, and I don't know that I'm going to do that yet, I, I know I need two for sure, but I've got one other girl that's still sitting on a chair and still functioning, so.
And I think it is important, I'll just reiterate, the fact that these are transfers and not additional as best they did. Try to look, check with Pete and see if there are other, you know, availability of file cabinets.
And if there is, I will definitely use them.
That type of thing. And, you know, these get transferred into a line item. If you have to not use, since you guys happen to find some things that, you know, they're maybe in the account.
Yeah, if I, yeah, if I can't find what I need down at the basement, I'll order them. If I find them through the basement, I will absolutely use those.
So we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you.
That brings us down to the Health Department. Transferring educational expenses to furniture fixtures for one thousand thirty-seven dollars.
And this, this is per their request as for computers. Now, with my reluctance to approve that condition for a transfer. And I think they're going to get a long run of benefit, much more from having that, their cash line and the computers.
The one is dead. But, I mean, I think they got.
Oh, offices, essentially, for a while. They were up and running now and.
I think it's.
Looking that they're going to, it wasn't much better. Meeting staff.
I wonder if they're going to be kind of like firms to look into their ARCA projects to niche up replacing computers and that.
Is there concern about the timeline of addressing and appropriating ARCA funds?
I'm concerned about it.
If we, if we've got a department that's without a computer right now and they're willing to transfer, while I understand what you're saying, I, I don't know that we have a defined timeline for those ones.
I know the need to cut off this old dance party. For that, yeah, so. Pushing to approve. Second. We've got a motion to approve, a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Here, aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero. And that brings us down to Carroll Manor. Transferring seven thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars from laundry to sugar and plant.
Hello. I'm Jamie Spess. I'm the new assistant of, when I was hired as, when I was assistant. November thirtieth was my first day. Monica emailed all of you the last night. I'm sure you recorded that email. I have hard copies of the email that she sent out to everyone. She had a breast and L surgery this morning. I left you guys all my bad copies, a hard copy.
I, I don't have any of that.
I don't either.
I, I was in there. I mean, I, I watched her send that, but then again. So I brought hard copies that she signed. I'm sorry. These are explains, are transfers. Megan has a retirement date set.
So the reason I wanted specifically the superintendent transfer pool is I'm not sure, well, actually, I'm fairly certain that this does not meet our policy. I don't want to, you, I mean, for.
What, what quarter I don't like.
About paying peoples, carrying over.
Paying out for vacation?
Yes.
When they retire, they get their vacation paid for. Um, we, HR and department and our commissioners, well, they have to agree when they have an accident or a fear. But there's. To roll it over, you have to, if you are the department head, you have to ask commissioners within thirty days of your anniversary date what she, she has. I mean, she doesn't, hasn't been available.
No, she was going to, but I don't think, there was a second, the second page was the transfers.
Okay, so she did, she did contact the HR, and so we're in, knowing that she wants to, but we're not agreeing on the amount of, of a vacation time right now. So, and she hasn't been available too, so we can get it explained.
So we do not have a letter of resignation?
You just got it.
This is.
Well, that's, they're got her retirement date on it.
So it's dated one thirty-one, oh, or twenty-first?
And that was because, you know, she, she does have to still train me, and I started on the thirtieth, and I mean, whatever, you know, and, and eight days I work, you know, leaveless hours trying to learn. There's so much to learn, you know. She can't take her vacation and I can't just run it for any stuff. That's it. She's trying to stay there and make sure that I'm learning everything and she can teach me.
I, I don't know how we can make a transfer when there's nothing to transfer. There's no, nobody's executed anything that would make this needed.
Why can't it not be done in January? Because she's staying in Denver. You can't even come from this year's business.
But she's, I mean, in practice, she wants to be paid out for vacation this year.
Salaries from some other.
Right.
She needed to take her four weeks this year because they were short staffed. There was, there was.
I don't think she's taken, she's taken some in the beginning of the year. That's what I'm saying. We, we have a one number, she has others because some of it was rolled over. Not sure.
But this, I mean, we can't appropriate anything until the commissioners agree. Is that correct? On paying vacation.
Because that's what's in the policy, but, but to this circumstances this year, I'm sure I may have skipped them, but.
I mean, this is.
I don't want to be.
I thought we were.
I thought we were, I, I.
I mean, we just.
We were gonna roll over, I thought we were gonna initial on it in, in January, I thought it was gonna be an additional cover all that we knew was coming.
No, we didn't talk about vacation.
Vacations are separate.
What was that one for?
What you guys decided at that time was not to put anything in for the assistant for next year, but then do an additional in January to cover the assistant, is how I understood it, and I might be wrong.
Yeah, I, I understood it the same way.
Yeah, but this is totally separation.
But we also thought, like, it was designed earlier, so that's not the case now that I see this, and I talked to her a couple days ago. But if it would have been, that position still needs to be, and I'm gonna tell you, is advertised, and for 14 days ahead, and then approved. So I just, kind of, this, this month is getting by, you know, I mean, we're getting close, so.
And that was a question I wanted to add too, with her date being the 31st, you know, and I know that that'll be next year, both positions are gonna have to be advertised for the 14 days, and I was hoping there wouldn't be a lapse to where there was only one person there, because.
Well, that's, that's the commissioner.
My question, how was this all by a certification retirement decision?
It says my retirement date is January 31st, 2023.
But that's under the, that's only to us, addressed to us, I don't know that the commissioner.
I have three letters, I have three letters here for the commissioners as well.
Okay.
And she verbally told them that too.
And she verbally told them, she cannot get a bill, but.
She verbally. Bill told us that at the last meeting.
I'll take the three commissioner letters and get it to them, and let's just.
Is this sufficient?
Sure. It's a public record, the commissioners could look at it from your records, I mean, so they have it constructively at least, and making, I don't know whether they got an actual copy of that.
Even inside of a transfer of just a recommendation, seems a little too short for this to me. Okay.
Very much, but it's certainly put in.
And that is for both?
Correct.
I will say it's less time consuming than it comes to my retirement.
What was that, did I?
It's, it's basically the same money, it's left unpaid additional next year, but it is less time consuming to encumber than it is for this year.
This is, so they're not asking for it?
No, but it does, they're not right now, but it, it does say on her transfer to encumber, to cover position. So I mean, I think that's what she wants to do.
That would take.
That we could do in December or January or February or something.
I don't think, see how we have enough information and no one's taking any action that would necessitate us. And plus, I mean, like, now we're getting, I mean, from a policy perspective, we're getting into, okay, you're, I like you, and, and you get paid out your overtime, and you know, you don't get that. Uh, and from a policy perspective, that is very onerous for, for the liability, you know, from my perspective.
And I understand, and that's why, you know, I do have a couple of heads upset with us, because we're trying to, we're, she's not talking about overtime, she's talking about vacation time, and we're trying to get that policy enforced. And that, and it's hard, because, you know, while we've always done it this way, or so-and-so did that and they rolled it over without, you know. So we're trying to get that all under control, and this is one of them that we are going to have, we're gonna talk with her and just see what's going on and see how it got to.
I don't always say what I mean, but I think Jackie understands what I'm saying.
And, and my other, my other statement about this, if you transfer into this line item, then we may have to encumber it next year. If things change and you don't want to encumber this money, you don't have to, because that's another big quest.
Just because you transfer it doesn't mean it's.
It's less expensive to not advertise.
It doesn't mean we have, we have our authority to stop it in, is that right?
It's less expensive not to advertise, and it's quicker to encumber the request.
Well, there's three weeks of pay.
Do we wanna get her on the record?
That is carried over, so, you know, you're paying for three weeks of work in January that you worked in December.
So that's part of the issue. Classify as an encumbrance.
No, but I'm just saying that that's why the amount.
Are you picking her up on the microphone?
I think right here.
Yes.
No, that's why.
I just wanna make sure it gets on the record.
Okay, it's, it's just, thank you.
I don't think they're having. So what happens if we table it until we get the right information, is there time to do that? You'd have to have another meeting this year.
Yeah.
You can't do this year's business next year, or next year's business this year.
Historically, we have, we've had a year-end meeting anyway.
We have one coming. Oh man, I was going to ask for one of the transfers, last minute. Transfers over $200.
I would like to agree with this to our agreement.
But we have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor, so.
And if she moves to table, then you need to take that first.
Take that first?
Yes, please, if there's a second.
Which one is just the first one?
It's just on Carol Manor, first, first one.
Can I say one more thing to also, because Martha was trying to stay to train me, and she said, I'm sorry, but, you know, if I have to take my vacation, then she's gonna take a vacation this year, that I'm not training, right? If you, if we want Carol Manor to stay open, Martha is actually participating, she's teaching the things, I'm here talking, my first meeting, and I feel like that's what was being pushed, was that Martha needed to retire, and that's how she feels, and that's what she's doing, and she is trying to teach me everything, but if she takes her vacation, she's worked there for 36 years, and if she's, you know, feels like she's being cheated out of it, then, then she's, you know, gonna push back and then.
I don't support you.
No, we, we completely understand the situation, I think we're talking about the procedural process that we need to take as a government entity.
To that point, Beth can't even say with surgery how many days there are right now today. And so if we transfer this today, it could get spent tomorrow, like, there's, there ha, there needs to be more research done here before we, before somebody has the authority to spend.
I mean, I think we can trust Beth to do our research in, in that, and, and we need to be more able, able to trust people that are doing, doing the work.
Well, we have.
We have a.
We have a motion.
Motion to table, send it, transfer from laundry to superintendent, and I will second that.
And that is to table two, another meeting this year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
To a, a meeting later this calendar year.
This calendar year, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we need to vote on the motion to table, all those in favor of table it, that transfer until a meeting later?
Can I just clarify something to her that you didn't tell Martha? Even though, even if they table it and not do this, okay, that doesn't mean she can't get paid next year, leaving on January 31st, okay? I mean, if she's earned the money, earned the time, that's, it can still be paid, that somebody will have to do an additional to get.
Okay, all right, I think that can be worked through.
I'm not saying that's gonna be.
Right, thank you.
Okay, a vote on table eight, the issue, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries five to two. And that brings us down to the five items on Superior Court, it's like all of these.
Vote it on the table, right?
Yes.
Now you need to vote on the voting on the floor, right?
It's tabled, so it'll come up next time.
That supersede.
It'll be, yeah, it'll be on the agenda automatically because it's been tabled.
Okay. Okay, and the five items on Superior Court, it's like office-wise printing, membership news, technology, technician, and software, all being transferred over in the year. No, we have to approve.
They've already been approved, it was just the top.
We only pulled the first one.
Yeah, I always, first, I would say, good.
Is this the same situation?
They, they said they're court renovation, Superior Court renovation, and I thought we funded that in the budget, for the 23 budget. So, and again, like, I, I don't understand how this is just some kind of whimsical, like, oh, by the way, we've got some money left over, we're gonna renovate the court, that doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, this is, this is, I mean, they're gonna set a precedence, if I have money left over in the line and that, I'm gonna throw it into something I might need. That was, that was my point in the chat, was, and I think this is probably the same thing, I'm not sure what it's for.
Well, it's, it's, I mean, I messed up the courtroom last year, kicked a hole in the jury box, that's the only thing I know about.
Yep, that was, um, back in.
Well, that's, that's what, I mean, I have no frame of reference for what.
Now, the thing I recall was that some of the technology, like the cameras and recording devices and things like that.
The speaker system was.
That was already, I thought that that was already done. No?
No, I thought that was what we put into the 23 budget.
Yes, I, yeah, I think we got, we saw furniture and fixtures.
Commissioner, they asked for 2,200 and you gave them 500 in this budget for next year.
Because we were going to put that system in the, the harbor parts, it's in the project of.
That's different from my report.
I don't know if they're all gonna get credit, I don't have money.
I mean, there's no, no representative here to clarify, no other guy.
Motion to table. We have a motion to Superior Court transfer.
Is that in your meeting?
Correct, that didn't enter me. Oh, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to table this, our transfer, is in further discussion. Here are none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to one. And I believe all the encumbrances were consent, is that correct?
I.
I don't know if they were, so.
I do have it under that.
You have it under consent? I can't tell, it's difficult from the agenda.
It would be second.
So one point on encumbrances as a general, what, I mean, I think we need to have a conversation about what an encumbrance is, you know, spending next year, spending 2022 budget in calendar year 2023. We've, we've been told this at AIC many times, and, and this, this body is kind of wobbled on this point, but I think we need to, like, a clear policy on this of when we accept encumbrances, and it needs to be after the first of the year, because if, if you're asking for an encumbrance, that means that you already have the invoice, and the money is sitting there, so why wouldn't you just pay? Like, there's no reason to do an encumbrance in the calendar year that we're doing.
The only reason would be is that they have not received their product, and you're not supposed to pay for something before you get it, so that's the only thing that I can think of.
Right, they already have.
Or contract. In order to do an encumbrance, in order, in order to do an encumbrance, you have to have an invoice dated by the 31st of that, of the year, of the current year, like invoice or contract for an accepted proposal, and there must be money in that specific line item to move it forward. You may not have the product, it doesn't matter whether you have the product or not. You could have the product and not have time to pay for it.
You paid for it, you paid for it.
Yeah, you may have the product and not have time to pay for it, you may have purchased something after the cutoff date for claims, in your budget, in the current year budget, and you have an invoice, and you just need to draw forward if there was not time in the current year process, the payment of the invoice. I guess I did not go back and check whether they had money in their line item, a lot of these I just got Tuesday, okay, that's why you're doing that late, and that was my fault. But anyway, is that. I think, yeah, I, I don't know, yeah, I lost my thought, is why, if you have the money and then your claims are due, I can see this year is a little bit different because of things are earlier. So I mean, there's a lot of them, I don't know where they, if they could have filed a claim, I don't know that, but I would think, I didn't have time to do that, you guys, I'm sorry.